Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Moreno. Councilmember Morell.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember King. We have three members. We have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Green is in attendance.
Move approval of the amendments from the March 31st meeting. Second by Councilmember King. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. So ordered. Ms. Carr, next item on the agenda.
Ordinance calendar number 35,037, calling for an election on October 11th, 2025, at which the electors of this city will be asked to approve an amendment to the Home Room Charter Bill of Rights.
If we could have the presenters come to the table, please, and start your presentation. Identify each presenter, and then you guys can proceed in the order that you see fit.
Good morning, everybody. This is Bruce Riley, Deputy Director of Vote.
Good morning. Monique Blossom, Director of Policy at Louisiana Fair Housing Action Center.
Jared Law, PhD student at Tulane University and Justice Initiative's Research Fellow for Education Trust in DC.
Good morning. My name is Rhonda Oliver. I'm the Executive Director of Women Determined.
Great morning. Patrick Young, Director of Economic Empowerment for 72+.
Good morning. Rhonda Marshall, Chief Policy Analyst at Voice of Experiment.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's there?
Yeah.
Okay, so this morning, we're going to talk about-
Make sure Mr. Marshall's mic is working. Hello, hello, hello? Yeah, now go. I really appreciate y'all having us here today. My colleagues and I want to talk to y'all about something that's very troubling in the city of New Orleans, all around the country, really. We're asking this body, this legislative body, to make formerly incarcerated people or people with conviction history a protected class in the city of New Orleans. What that means, that'll make it illegal to discriminate on the basis of that felony conviction, which is a huge problem. And I have a slide deck that I'm going to go through just to show you some numbers, to show you how I look. When you protect formerly incarcerated people, you actually increase public safety. You actually increase economic growth. And each of my colleagues here has an expert, a subject matter expertise, and they're going to speak to you about that particular thing when we get to that particular thing. How do you work this slide deck? So... Oh, it doesn't work? Okay. All right, got it. So the reason we're here today, like I said, is to ask this body to amend, add two words, conviction history into the Bill of Rights. We will make it illegal to discriminate against formerly incarcerated people or people with conviction history. Why it matters? Discrimination in any state or any locale increases recidivism. It affects public safety. When you discriminate against formerly incarcerated people, you actually put the public at danger. And the key message that I want you all to get today, protecting formerly incarcerated people protects public safety and increases economic growth. Just keep your, as I go through the slide deck, just remember that. Protecting formerly incarcerated people increases public safety and increases economic development. And this data is taken directly from the city council's website. In 2004, there was 140,000 people arrested in the city of New Orleans. Five years later, there was close to 93,000 more thousand people arrested in the city of New Orleans. A 20-year impact. In 20 years, in 20 years, 1 million people was arrested in the city of New Orleans. And when you do the numbers, and I took a lowball figure, 30% likely convicted. At 140,000 arrests in 2004, 42,000 people was estimated convicted in 2004. And five years later, you have 92,000 people with a 27 conviction, 27,000 people convicted. That's close to 70,000 people convicted in just two years alone, in two years. And when you fact in a million people was arrested in the city of New Orleans in 20 years, that's 300,000 people likely convicted in this city. And today, New Orleans only have a population of, I believe, 364,000 people. And that's factoring in the recidivism. We could reduce the number to maybe 150,000 to remove the people that was, who were offended, was rearrested and reconvicted. You still have a large demographic of people in the city of New Orleans who have conviction history status. The need for this amendment, there are legal gaps. Like, for instance, the Banned the Box initiative that this city passed a couple of years ago, the only thing the Banned the Box does is basically remove that box from the application. Employers can still, I mean, housing providers, employment providers can still discriminate after the background check or even during the interview. We have stories from our Justin Packer people who want to tell you a story, how they have been discriminated against. Housing limitations, Mr. Bruce Riley is going to speak to the housing limitations when it's time to speak with the next slide. And the financial barriers. I mean, as a formerly incarcerated person, I know the financial barriers that we face in the country. And Patrick Young is going to speak to that when we get to that piece of this PowerPoint. And this is where Mr. Bruce Riley comes in there, the importance of this amendment as it relates to housing.
Thank you, members of the council. Bruce Riley with vote. I think, as you know, housing is a very difficult situation across the country and potentially as bad here as anywhere for all the different reasons of trying to find available housing. We have people taking away housing stock. We have, you know, just the supply and demand. We have the problem with building housing, especially affordable housing. And people who have conviction histories and their families face the added problem of generally having to fill out a background check and paying to do that. And one of the real big flaws in that system is also the fact that you're paying for something that you don't even know what you're paying for. You're probably paying for your own discrimination. And so you don't know upfront what crimes are going to trigger some type of further review or some kind of negative result. You don't know how long ago it had to have been. You don't know what status it is. You don't know if they're going to hear you out at all. And a lot of rental companies are run by corporations. They're run by algorithms. Maybe you pay a fee for, you know, 50 bucks a month, and you're allowed to send all your background checks through this system as a landlord. A lot of corporate landlords own lots of properties, not just the mom and pop that people always like to characterize as landlords. As we know, that's a shrinking landlord profile here in New Orleans. And so you pay your $50, you find out that you're denied. You don't get your $50 back. There's no rules on all of that. Let's just say you have a serious crime, but it's 30 years ago. Let's say you have a petty crime, but it's 30 days ago. Which one is more impactful? Well, maybe it depends on the algorithms being used, which you don't know what it is. And so people are paying for something that is not of any service to them, is a service to the landlord. And anyone who goes to apply for a job, especially if it's a low-wage job, you're not paying for your own demise, right? If you want to do a check on somebody as the employer, as the landlord, the person who's getting the money, that should be your responsibility. But the problem with that is, I illustrated just to show that there's a million ways to rent property. Now, this is a business decision. This isn't trying to find a roommate on Craigslist. You have chosen to invest in property in our city and become a commercial transactor of people's homes. And so you're subject to regulation. Anytime you do commercial activity, you're subject to regulation. And we know this body struggles with the short-term rental problem back and forth for some years now. This is something that we should be struggling with. We should be going back and forth with. And we should be challenging landlords, particularly corporate landlords, who choose to invest in our city, as Ronald said, is not making our city safer because when you deny people housing, well, then what? Well, then they got to kick the can down the road. They look again, deny them again, then what? Eventually, you're left to just your own devices, and you say, "Well, no one's going to rent me a place. I have a job. I have money, and I can't find a place." Well, what about the person who doesn't have a job or who doesn't have money? Who's maybe trying to go from pillar to post to find their way towards some stability? So we have people in this city who, through their investments, are making us less safe. And we've tried work with Hana. We've tried work with HUD. We've made some gains over the last decade in this country and in this city. And this is the type of thing where we have to say to our landlords, "Listen, there's plenty of reasons not to rent a place to so-and-so. This shouldn't be one of them." In the same way, being a family shouldn't be one of them. Being black shouldn't be one of them. Being a woman shouldn't be one of them. And simply having a felony conviction history should not be one of them. Thank you.
And real quick, just to get some context, so this is the Bill of Rights that we're asking this legislative body to amend. But we've also been working with Councilmember Thomas's office. We've also amended Chapter 86 as well as Banned the Box, but that's going to come up in another hearing. But it works in tandem with the Bill of Rights. This is just the foundation. This is the first step to make formerly incarcerated people a protected class. Chapter 86 deals with all the procedures and safeguards to ensure that people who have that conviction history is not discriminated against in the city of New Orleans. And I will present that piece of legislation to y'all when the time come. And we also amended the Banned the Box to put a little more tittie in it to ensure that we're not being discriminated as a result of that immutable characteristic. Next, we're going to talk about the economic advantages of making formerly incarcerated people or people with conviction history a protected class. And I'm going to let Patrick Young speak to this real quick.
Great morning. When we talk about economic development, economic development simply means quality of life, quality of community. We have seen from the council over the years how important it is to make sure that we're driving home a good budget, making sure that taxpayers are not wasting money in the city of New Orleans. But when we consider the cost-benefit versus the cost-deficit of taxpayers to hire, well, to deal with people who are formerly incarcerated, if we examine that, then it is to the economic development and economic benefit that this passes. Then why is that? It's a numbers thing. There are four drivers primarily economic development. Your first is always going to be employment. Your second is always housing. Third is credit and sales. And the fourth is ownership. When we think of the Super Bowl and why it was such a big economic booster for the city was because we had people who came in and were able to use their dollars and spend it within our community. But just imagine being barred from your own community, not being able to access any of these hotels, any of these housing establishments, not being able to provide any type of money to support the growth of your own community. And that's what economic disenfranchement does when you're formerly incarcerated. Right now, if you're formerly incarcerated, you're 75% to be unemployed. Employers, there are 60% of employers who are saying that they have issues with hiring people with convictions. You're 10 times as likely to be homeless with a conviction. And why are all these barriers in place simply because you have that conviction? Removing this, we begin now to add money to the economy. So there's $350 million worth of new wages if employers hire people with convictions. There's $25.5 million in tax revenue that can be generated to the state if we allow people with convictions to get their employment, but also contribute, not only federal taxes, but state taxes. And then lastly, we can't see this slide, but-
Yeah, so the 525 million, so speaking to Patrick's point, let's say, for instance, the city of New Orleans approved this initiative, and people in New Orleans become a protected class. And you allow 10,000 people, just 10,000, let's say 10,000 formerly incarcerated people are now able to work because they're not being discriminated against. And they're making at least $35,000 a year. $35,000 times 10,000 will boost the economy by $350 million. $350 million. That's taxable by $25.5 million. That number, that 525, that's the number that's going to, 100, an additional 175 million will generate as a result of reinvestments, tax credits, and things of that nature. But the kicker is this, the city of New Orleans will save $25 million in correctional budget as a result of 10,000 people not being in the system, who are actually working. So this is a huge economic advantage for the city of New Orleans to allow formerly incarcerated people to work without those barriers.
One more thing. So we're talking about the advantages. The disadvantage is, right now, the city of New Orleans spends over $265 million on criminal justice expenses. The annual cost of incarceration is $30,000 per individual, and that is a total of $50 million in potential wage lossage each year. So when we talk about the numbers of what's, you know, making sure that the city is spending money properly and making sure that we're at the advantage to compare to other cities, well, how much money are we effectively spending and how much are we wasting on trying to incarcerate versus investments?
And you know, to Patrick's point, and I'm just thinking about, like, I know you all, we all from New Orleans, and we ride around our city a lot. And you're probably wondering, okay, wow, if this affects a large number of people, why they're not in the room? Why they're not here to testify? Where are these people at? Why they not here to complain? One, there was a shame, a stigma associated with being a formerly incarcerated person who was homeless and who was jobless. People are ashamed of that. I have friends who are ashamed to tell me that they're living in their car. I have friends who are considered legends in the city, but when you see them, they're pushing or pulling an ice bucket with cold drinks in it through the fridge quarters. That's how, that's their money. They're entrepreneurs. The party buses, many of the men who drive the party buses, some of them are formerly incarcerated. The homelessness, many of them are formerly incarcerated. That's how it looks. Those, that's humanizing the data for you to see. That's how it look. When you see youngsters, young people cycling in and out between poverty and that jail, that's homelessness. I work in a jail as a trauma-informed facilitator, and I go in that jail every Friday. And one of the things I notice when I go in that jail to teach my trauma class, I ask the brother man, "What are you doing in here?" He said, "I might have to get off the street, get some rest, get something to eat, and take a shower." Because they homeless. They can't find a job. You wonder why the recidivism rates like a cycle? That's why. People use the jail as a sanctuary to get something to eat, to get a good night's sleep, and take a shower, and then they back on the street. They actually, that's how bad it is for some of us. Public safety impact, employment reduces recidivism. Recent real-life story. Last year, November the 12th, my oldest son was killed. He was released. He had been home 18 months. I knew his story because I was hands-on his story every single day. From the day he walked out of prison, I picked him up from Elaine Hunt. And from that point on, I brought him to job interview, after job interview, after job interview, temp services, picking him up, getting rejected. He called me at least nine times in 18 months. Nine times in 18 months. The last time he was terminated, I brought him in to Hyrum Ham to get a urine test. And he go get the urine test. He passed the urine test. And the reason for the urine test, because he was being hired by the union from the temp service. So he passed the urine test, went to work the next day. He said, "Dad, I'm going to get this job. Urine test come back clean." They did a background check, found out he had a felony conviction. They terminated him that same day. And the reason I say this, I say this because I would never forget the frustration. My son tried. He tried to find his place in the workforce. He tried. I was there picking him up, waking up 2 o'clock in the morning, bringing him to the sanitary department, picking him up when he got off at 3 o'clock in the morning. I was there with him. But every time, every step he made, he was terminated as a result of that conviction. And the last time he was terminated, he said, "Dad, you know what? I'm sick of this." He got five children. He can't afford his family. You know what happens? Survival of the fittest kicks in. Frustration kicks in. Anger kicks in. And now he's dead. He's dead because he had to make a decision to take care of himself. In fact, he was robbed and killed in the city of California because he was in the game, trying to make money to survive for his family. The only way many of our kids and our young people know how to survive when they've been blackballed. And that's my son's story. And I just want to bring him in this space because he died as a result of not having those protections. Nothing I could do about it. Nothing we could do about it. He was legally discriminated against for being a formerly incarcerated person who had all the willingness and the skills to make it better for his life, but he was blackballed. Like, so, like, thousands of us in this country are oftentimes blackballed as a result of that felony conviction. And we're asking this legislative body to please change that. And I have another story here that's deeply frustrating, deeply powerful, deeply emotional. I'm going to pass the microphone to Rhonda Oliver, so she just can share a little bit of our story while she's here.
Great morning, everyone. My name is Rhonda Oliver. And I would like to just tell my story, what I experienced as a formerly incarcerated person here working at the city of New Orleans. I was released from prison in 2015, and I landed a job with the Department of Code Enforcement. I read the policy, did what was necessary to work up, and was promoted several times, went back to school, obtained a bachelor's degree, took the test that was necessary. I contacted someone from Sewerage and Water Board, Latricia Matthews, letting them know, "Hey, I just got a bachelor's degree, and I'm trying to get in one of these accounting positions that's been open." And the lady was very excited to learn, at that time I was promoted to Sewerage and Water Board, and she said, "You work at Sewerage and Water Board?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am. I'm here in the billing department." She said, "Could you come upstairs?" And I said, "Sure." So when she saw me, she said, "Did you pass the civil service test?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, I did." She said, "Are you on the registry?" I said, "Yes, ma'am, I am." And she was very excited to learn that someone who's working at Sewerage and Water Board had already passed the test because they was in need of accounting, accountants. This was early part of October of last year. So Ms. Latricia Matthews then said, "We're going to hire you. We're going to start you on October the 21st because we don't like starting people in the middle of a pay period." I was very excited to know that finally I was able to get in at a position that's paying, starting off with $60,000. So I go back downstairs, and she said she was going to contact me the next day, and we have emails of this. The next day, she didn't contact me. So I contacted her, and this excited woman was no longer excited. And I said, "Ma'am," I said, "I was waiting to hear from you." And she said, "Oh, I contacted civil service. We qualify. We need a two, not a one." I said, "Well, a one can also be a two. It's up to you." "No, we're looking for a two." "Well, I qualify to be a two also." "Well, no, when we get a two, then we'll, we'll, we'll look, we'll come reach out to you." So I said, "Thank you, ma'am." So then I was promoted to the Department of Finance as a tax preparer, as a tax specialist. I'm so, I'm sorry, waiting to get an accounting position in that department. So I was hired at the Department of Finance on September the 4th of 2023. And on January the 26th, 2024, I was called to the office, and they said, Ms. Courtney Wilson said, "Ms. Oliver, you're not a good fit." And I said, "I'm not a good fit?" And she says, "No, you're not a good fit." And I thanked her and walked out the office. And then I began to follow the Banned the Box policy that states that if you're, if you believe that you were terminated because you're formerly incarcerated, then email Mr. Gilbert Motano. Did that, no response. Emailed the mayor, no response. Emailed Ms. Hamilton, no response. I have four emails from civil service. You passed a test for accountant one, data analyst, auditor. All these positions pay $60,000 upward. But nobody, nobody has yet called me for any of these positions. Again, I stated that I was terminated from the Department of Finance, and nobody said anything. Nobody responded. So I appealed to the Fourth Circuit Court. And on November the 12th, I argued my case against a city attorney in the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeal, and I won. And the judges asked the city of New Orleans over and over again, "Why was she fired?" And nobody was able to answer. So now, the city of New Orleans is appealing to the Supreme Court. And Ms. Denisha Turner stated, "Ms. Oliver's case is impacting the entire city." Why? Follow the policy. The policy tells you exactly what needs to be done. And it says that if you've been pardoned by the state of Louisiana, you shouldn't have any problems. However, I'm having a problem landing these jobs that's on, although I'm on the list, and the only thing that's stopping me, because I know that I am amongst the best and the brightest, but I am a formerly incarcerated person. So the Banned the Box policy is not working. I have everything this policy says, and right now, we have a city attorney that's asking the Supreme Court to tell them what to do because Rhonda Oliver's case, this is just filed by the city of New Orleans, is impacting the entire city. This should not be. The policy is broken, and the policy does not work. And being that it doesn't work, I'm out of work. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
You know, Rhonda's case is unique only because Rhonda was a jailhouse lawyer like myself and Bruce Riley on the inside. But there's so many more of us who don't have the legal mind to fight back like Rhonda. So we are here not because of myself. I haven't faced discrimination in housing. I never faced discrimination in employment because Mr. Norris Henderson invoked, made it possible for me to land a job, and my family made it possible for me to have some place to stay. So I don't know what discrimination feel like, but I could tell you this. All of my friends, and I'm formerly incarcerated. I spent 25 years of my life in Angola in the Department of Corrections. All of my friends, I know their stories. So I'm sitting here because, not because of myself, I'm sitting here because of them. When they call me and ask me for $20 and $35, I tell them, "Man, I can give you 10, brother," because I can't give that type of money every day to 15, 20 men and still take care of my family on a Saturday I make. But I do what I can for them. Every time they call me, every time they call me, "Come pick me up. I need a ride here," I go get them. Bring me to this job, man. I'm trying to get this guy, I go get them. Because everybody's hand I shake on a day-to-day basis, they're formerly incarcerated, and they're discriminated against. And they don't have the legal mind like Rhonda to follow the pleading into a court to fight for themselves. So we're asking this legislative body to help us to protect our most vulnerable population in the city of New Orleans. And the reason for these protections is simple. Here's some, if you look on the board, we have the protective class status for race and gender. If you recall, before Martin Luther King and all our civil rights icons walked this earth, black people, women, we faced significant barriers because of that immutable trait that we call black skin. It wasn't until after the civil rights era that blacks began to find upward economic mobility. It wasn't because of those protections that women were acknowledged and treated a little better than it was being treated pre-civil rights legislation. And then we have disability protections. This is a vulnerable population of people. If you look around, every city you go in, every building you go to, there is accessible, accessibility ramps for that group of people. Prior to the disability protections, there weren't many ramps for our disabled population. They was forced to get out their wheelchair and pick their wheelchair up. The protections make it easier for people to move along in life. And the disability protections is a physical, is a physical manifestation of how, when you create protection for people, you give them own ramps into society. You give them enrolls into society. That's what the disability protection has done for that population. And then we have the veterans. At one time, no one wanted to hire a veteran because of the PTSD. But now, because veterans have protection, they find some economic mobility. They're protected in large. They're able to get on with their life and build for their family. It's wraparound services. I watched the OJJ come here last Monday, and that administrative body, they wrapped their package up, their initiative up, as wraparound service for the kids. And, I mean, this entire legislative body who attended that hearing Monday, there was a total agreement that those kids needed wraparound services. What the protective class for formerly incarcerated people is wraparound services for adults. We need the wraparound services. You have close to 100,000 people in this city who are suffering that conviction history. And you talk about the crime problem. That's what, this is a step to alleviate some of that crime problem. If you wave a flag and say, "Hey, everybody in the city of New Orleans with that felony conviction, I have a job for you. You're able to work now. I guarantee you that crime problem will decrease. Trust me." I'm from this city. I'm from the night wall. I grew up in the projects. When people have access to jobs, it's not they don't want to work. Former incarcerated people want to work. We would tear down a job, I mean, a building to work. We worked for two cents an hour for the state while I was incarcerated. Do you not think they would not want to work for $8 or $10? Do you not think they would not want to work for eight dollars or ten dollars or fifteen dollars an hour after working for two cents for twenty years? Of course. They work, they willingly work for two cents an hour while incarcerated. And now when they come home, they don't have the same access to work. And you wonder why you have a crime problem? That's one of the reasons. That's one of the reasons. And we have an opportunity to take a big chunk out of that crime problem by making formerly incarcerated people a protective class and giving them, making discrimination against that group of people illegal. You want to reduce the crime problem? Make it illegal to discriminate against that demographic of people, and I guarantee you, over time, your crime problem will decrease some more. It's good now, but it will decrease some more. And I have one more story I want to share. I'm gonna pass the mic to Jared Wall, his story is equally powerful as Rhonda's story.
Thank you, Ronald, and thank the council members for being able to speak this morning. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Jared Wall, I served twenty-six years in Indiana. Uh, I've been in New Orleans since two thousand and nineteen. I just want to tell you a little bit about my story, uh, what led me here. Uh, I originally began wanting to be a therapist. And because of the blocks for licensure, how I had to change careers. In nineteen eighty-nine, I was seventeen.
All right.
Sixty years or the death penalty. Attorney walks in, he didn't say, how are you, you okay, anything? He says, why did you do it? And I couldn't answer him. He was seventeen, I didn't yet have the concepts, even understand my life, what had happened to me. I didn't have the concepts, understand trauma. I didn't even have the, the, the language to wrap around my experience. So not being able to answer him, why did you do it, to be honest, frightened me. Because if I was capable of all that and didn't know why, then what else could happen? So it became, at seventeen years old, I knew I had to answer that question, why did you do it, to and for myself. That was the beginning of my adult life. When I got to Maxim's Security Prison, uh, jailhouse lawyer read over my case, and he saw some obvious red flags. And we sat down and we talked, and he became the first person in my life that I ever really shared my background with and talked to him. And he says, hey, you know what? And he says, I have this friend over in the psych office, she's therapist, he says, why don't you see her? Well, you know what? He trusted her, I trusted him, so I went. He was a peer and a mentor to me. And that was the point that began saving my life. So I was fortunate during my incarceration to go through all sorts of therapy, individual therapy, group therapy, different, couple different bouts of anger management. First one, I probably learned that depressions, anger turned inward. Second, I learned that anger is a secondary emotion, so there's usually a hurt or something that happened first. After like ten to twelve years, I was finally able to answer that question to and for myself, why did you do it? And that made all the difference. Around the twelve years also, uh, I went back to court, knowing that I had one shot, one opportunity. And I got denied, in a pretty ugly way, too. So I go back and I have to face the fact that I'm about to serve my entire sentence. And so I knew in my bones, I knew my intuition, a lot of this had come through skills I had learned with therapy, and just a sense of knowing what I had to do for self-care. And I sat in the dark during every rec period, because I could be alone in my room, and I would just face that fact that I'm gonna serve this time. I'm never gonna have a normal life. It was like the, I could see the eyes of the children I would never have. After about a month or so, I was able to keep facing that, accept it, and move on. Around the same time, I realized I wanted to be a therapist, because of what the therapeutic, you know, dyad had done for me. And so I already at this point had my G D associate and a bachelor degree, and I'd earned a prison. And I earned another bachelor degree in psychology. Because I wanted to be able to help those. My people. So I'd get interested in, like, gestalt psychology, I'd study a stack of books, Jungian psychology, another stack, post-Jungians, another Adler, mindfulness-based therapies, acceptance and commitment therapy. During my, rest of my bid, I was always studying psychology. And in the last year, I literally every day studied psychology, trying to prepare myself to go to graduate school, with the goal of becoming a therapist. So I got out, uh, had to study six to eight hours every day to be able to take the GRE to be prepared. I took it, I got the scores I needed. I applied to my alma mater, from whom I had earned three degrees and ran their college program inside for twelve years. And they denied me. Because of a nineteen eighty-nine conviction when I was seventeen years old. Ended up, I was being denied by that, my alma mater for three years in a row. In the meantime, I was accepted by a less prestigious local private university, uh, where I was working toward a master's of counseling. And I was actually a counselor in training. My person who had oversaw me, my supervisor, she would call me in different times for me to help her even on certain areas that she felt like I had more of an expertise. But it ended up, as I'm progressing through this program, it became pretty apparent how difficult it was going to be to achieve licensure. One of my profs, professors even spoke to someone on the state board, friend of his, and the person told him, never. So at this point, it was the halfway point, I could get a master of psychology versus, at thirty hours versus a sixty-hour master of counseling. And I decided I had to stop at that point, already thirty thousand dollars in student debt. So I started applying to PhD programs, which I knew would broaden the scope, it would, you know, give me more possibilities of what I could do. But I was denied another three years trying to get into PhD programs throughout the country. Again, because of the criminal legal background. So during this period, I'm, I have two bachelors, I have two masters, and I'm working a job making nine to twelve hour, dollars an hour at wood flooring. There's nothing wrong, of course, with wood flooring, but I was waking up to a life every day that I didn't want to live. I felt I was wasting more years of my life, when what I wanted to do is I wanted to help other people as I had been helped. During this period, three years, you know, I had to deal with, I had to fight despair, depression, I had to fight alcoholism. It was a very discouraging period. I'm grateful I had the resilience and the skill sets of having therapy for so many years, and I had a solid family support, too. Around this point, a professor from Auburn University sat me down, and he says, look, you can probably become a therapist someday. He says, this has to happen, then this, then this, then this. Probably can happen when the stars align right. He says, but, you're not young anymore, you can't do twenty-six years and still be young. He says, how long do you want to wait? When you can be doing good work by spreading your scope and not necessarily trying for licensure. So it's when he says that, that I actually, I looked down here and I can saw the same restrictions on licensure to become a counselor. But one thing that did happen down here is Louisiana was the first state in the nation to ban the box at public universities. And Tulane had followed suit when that happened. So ended up, people down here reached out to me, and I ended up coming, applying for the program and got accepted. It took me about three years to get over having to shift my, you know, my profession. It's like, I feel like so few people have a sense of calling or vocation of what they're supposed to do in life. And I had that, and I couldn't do it. Now, I work in a field called higher education in prison, I work with college prison programs. I taught inside, just like I taught on campus. Uh, I research, I'm a evaluator, I'm a coach, and I work with policy. But it's not the profession I really wanted to be. I feel I'm doing good work right now, working in the field of higher education in prison. My dissertation, I'm doing my data analysis right now, it's on a novel topic, so it's something new, it's gonna add to the field. But while it's interesting, it might even be useful, it's not the most pressing issue, I believe, for our population. During my dissertation interviews, even though I'm talking to people about their college experience inside, there's all these lingering effects of trauma that are coming in through on these interviews. Uh, and it's not even the subject of my, uh, inquiry. I have people telling me, hey, I've been out nine months, and I can't sleep, did you have that? I'm like, yes. Uh, you know, I have different dreams about being in prison still, the violence or that I'm out, and I'm gonna get locked, the fear of gonna be locked up again, have you had those? Yeah. People talking about how they don't fit in anywhere. One young lady spoke of a two-month depression she had after her release, because she had left her social support system on the inside. So many of us live in this state because of prison from, you know, fight or flight. And it's our default mode we've learned to live with, and a lot of us don't even know it. I know it because I've been through it. Interesting, I talked to several people that go back into prisons that are formerly incarcerated, to try to do work in my field, higher ed in prison, and they're talking to me about the trauma effects they're having from doing so. One person, he told me that the last visit he had went to in Baltimore, basically for the next three weeks, he said he couldn't, he would just break out crying. When I graduate, more of this trauma of people going inside, this secondary trauma they're experiencing, more of what our population experiences with trauma, and the readjustment for reentry, these are going to be my areas of research. So eager to graduate and move on to that. Basically, what I'm gonna be doing is I'm gonna be doing the research to inform other people who can be counselors. When I have the lived experience and the education, and I could be doing that myself, I could have been doing it already. So it doesn't just do me a disservice, it's, you know, okay, yeah, so I had this point in it, my life's course went differently than I expected, I have student debt. Yeah, it does affect me. But I feel like it affects our population. All those people that Ronald were talking about that have been arrested, that are formerly incarcerated, we are an underserved population when it comes to mental health. We need all the mental health people we can get, workers, but we need competent people. We need people who understand what we've gone through, we really need people with experience, people with lived experience to be able to work with people who are living the experience. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Jared. I was just sitting here just thinking about Jared's story. Jared had the alternative decision between two positives. The negative and the good positive, even though he couldn't do the work he wanted to do, he was able to do other work in another area, even though that wasn't his desire. And I think about the many women, women and men I taught to every day, because I am boots on the ground in New Orleans, in this community. I'm connected to so many just impact the people. They don't have that alternative positive outcome to do something other than not, when they, when they, when they're unable to do the thing that they want to do, like work, their alternative is that subculture that we dislike. And a symptom, the traumas, when you wake up every morning and you're jobless, that's a trauma. And that trauma rattles your nerves, it stresses you out. You wake up every morning, you're homeless, that's a trauma. And a symptom of that trauma leads to alcoholism and drug addiction. They have so many collateral consequences associated with joblessness and unemployment. If you look at that chart, that, that, the statistic, the statistical data on the board, you can't see it's a PDF file, but it's interactive on my page. But the unemployment rate after four years, it increases from six months to four years, that percentage increases. But the most significant data set on this chart is this, if you look at the bar of United States peak, in the nineteen thirties, the United States saw the worst joblessness or economic depression in the history of this country. Well, guess what? Former incarcerated people, we are five times worse than the Great Depression of the nineteen thirties. That's how bad it is for that, it's a hundred and twenty million of us in this country. A hundred and twenty million. A hundred and fifty thousand right here in the city of New Orleans. And many of us are cycling between homelessness, unemployment. You know what, the, 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 when you, when you have a formerly incarcerated person who has found upward mobility, it's not because of a job, it's because they was forced to make that decision to become an entrepreneur. And many of us don't have that, that entrepreneurial spirit to build a business from the ground up, and it becomes marketable, it becomes historic. Many of us don't have that ability to do it, some of us depend upon other systems to find jobs, to find work. And when those systems are not available to us, then we're basically banned from inroads into mainstream society. And people are cycling out of this, on the outskirts of society, walking around the wilderness with backpacks. Just pay attention, I'm gonna give you some glasses so you can see your city. When you're driving home every day, when you go from here to your house to a school, pay attention to the people who have bag sacks on their back, the older men. Pay attention to them hanging on different street corners. Pay attention to them pulling the ice cream bucket. Pay attention to them driving those little cars in the city. Many of them are entrepreneurs as a result of that felony conviction. And there was, there was a case law that says this. A, a group of people should be considered a protective class if they can show that they have an immutable characteristic that forms the basis for the discrimination. Like black skin formed the basis for discrimination. That felony conviction, even if it's expunged, it still forms the basis for discrimination. If you can show that that group of people are powerless in the political process, formerly incarcerated people have to fight for their voting rights. There, there, some of us can't vote if we're on parole or probation. Then they have this other characteristic that say, if you cannot participate in the political process. All this, this criteria shows us that formerly incarcerated people should be protected, because we meet this criteria. And that's all we're asking this legislative body to do. Give us a shot. Help us to become better human beings, help us to help the city to thrive, help us to reduce the crime rate, help us to protect public safety, help us to increase the economic growth of this community, that's all we asking, just, just give us some protections in law. The same protection that other Democrats or people have, they suffered all of these bad things prior to their being protected in law. And when you say protections, protection in law basically mean that you're giving us a remedy at law to hold the actors of discrimination liable. And that's gonna come out in chapter eighty-six when we get to it. But we have to amend this bill of rights, which is the, the city's constitution, in order for us to amend chapter eighty-six, which has already been amended with Dominique, with the staff attorney Dominique Lang, she already have a copy, that's another conversation. But that's the, that's, that's the T, that's the meat of what we're doing here today. And I'm gonna conclude, conclude my, 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 my point, I'm, I'm really emotional right now. And I just want to have, in my colleagues, if they have anything they want to say before we close.
One thing I want to point out is that this is not a, a new idea, concept. In two thousand and twenty-two, Atlanta amended its civil rights ordinance to include criminal history as a protected class, ensure fair access to employment, they increased their employment economic opportunity by forty-two percent. In Kansas City, Missouri, in two thousand and twenty-five, Kansas City expanded its civil rights protections to cover individuals with criminal records, reinforcing its commitment to social justice. And in two thousand and twenty-four, Washington DC had a fair hiring policy that led to thirty-three percent increase in employment rates for justice impacted individuals. This has proven that the economic benefits isn't just a, a tax burden, but it's a tax benefit for this amendment to pass. And it's already being done in other cities. New Orleans can also have the reform and be leading, um, in these efforts as well. Because we'll be one of the only southern cities really with the draw to really make an impact with this full amendment.
And I would like to add one more thing also. Right now, in this country, um, we have a president who is firing people on probation. When I hear- a president who is firing people on probation. When I hear about that and people being alarmed, I said, don't be alarmed because the city of New Orleans does the same thing. I'm a probationary employee and somebody pointed their finger at me and without reason, they fired me. But the policy prohibits it. But for decades in the city of New Orleans, I'm, my research shows that people have been fired because they are on probation and I can fire you for any reason. But the Fourth Circuit Court says no. So right now, we are fighting, or they are fighting me, but they're losing. And Anisha Turner is now saying, where do we go from here to the policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Any Councilmember, Morel, comments from the council members?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a lot to say. And I, I know everyone here. I know Bruce, I know Norris. And I am always very candid whether it gets me in trouble or it doesn't get me in trouble. I promise y'all, y'all gonna like half of what I'm going to say. You're probably not, not gonna like the other half. I want to start by talking about Jared. I appreciate your story. I know I worked with Norris and Bruce on Raise the Age for that specific purpose. We should not be incarcerating 15, 16, 17-year-olds adults because their brains are not developed. And we have a governor now with a whole horde of DAs that is doing everything possible to regress back to locking up people as quickly as possible. I think that the citizens of the state spoke very loudly when they rejected the, the four amendments because one of those was literally about making it easier to lock up children. So that was, I will say honestly, a pleasant surprise just because I know from my work at the state level, it seems like everybody is always trying to lock up kids. Ms. Oliver, I am very sorry for what you've been through. And I say that because I had my staff go look, and the last email we got from you was you looking out for a fellow sewage or water board employee who was being screwed over by sewage or water board.
Yes.
I mean, you are the kind of person we want in government, and I want to applaud you for your bravery in speaking out. I will tell you, and many people who frequent the council chambers know, we are pretty much in perpetual disagreement with the city attorney's office on almost everything they're doing. And they have made it very clear, and our district courts have made it very clear, that we are not allowed to tell them what to do. And on several pieces of litigation, and this would be one of them, I had no idea this case was happening. And I'll tell you what's very interesting to me, for the city attorney to put in a brief that this affects the future of the city of New Orleans, and this council's never been briefed on your case, tells you that's BS.
Yes.
Just full-on BS. If your case was going to undo the city of New Orleans, you would think in our, in our almost weekly legal briefings, it would have come up. It never has. I will tell you that your case represents the fundamental failure of "ban the box." The fact that your appeals process goes to Gilbert Montano first, and that he is the arbiter of your fate, tells you it's fundamentally unfair. That is the most subjective process you could possibly imagine. That if you feel like you're discriminated against, you don't go to a panel of people that are independent outside the city of New Orleans. No one reviews your case in an objective, not subjective matter. A guy who works directly for the mayor, who's okay with the people that fired you, gets to give you the thumbs up or thumbs down, right? That's basically how it goes.
Yes.
And I appreciate, and I'll look forward to whatever legislation they're following to see how I can help improve it, because that has to fundamentally be fixed. Now here's like where the bad news kind of comes up. I want to be very clear for level setting. When we amend the charter, that affects the city, not private industries. Your, your situation in particular speaks to the need to do it, but I don't want people to think that if we do this, and you walk into McDonald's and they don't give you a job, you've got a new right. There's a whole section of the Bill of, the Bill of Rights, the last section is 13, "The Bill of Rights shall not create enforceable rights, duties, obligations, or causes of action under the charter beyond those guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of State of Louisiana." The problem we have is that even if we as a city recognize the formerly incarcerated as a protected class, that only applies to us. But that being said, we as a city should lead by example. If we're discriminating against the formerly incarcerated, how are we going to tell private businesses you shouldn't? Especially when we're making you, and I mean, I am so frustrated and so enraged by the fact that you are having to spend all the money and time to go through the legal process to defend yourself while the unlimited resources of the city are being used against you. And it speaks to fundamentally a problem asked to be addressed. Now, I do, there's one thing in here. I support this amendment, but I do want to kind of highlight some challenges I think we're going to have to go through now. The language of the amendment itself, I think, addresses it, but some of the testimony makes it muddy. The language says, "Shall be provided that no law shall arbitrarily and unreasonably discriminate against a person based on conviction history." I want to be clear because it will be a talking point against the amendment, we're not getting rid of background checks. And I say that because when it comes to certain places of employment, particularly NOPD, I do not want to waive background checks on NOPD officers because we have people currently that have been pardoned by the Trump administration for assaulting police officers who are pardoned and could apply to be a police officer. The only way we're able to uncover and look at those issues is by having that ability. Now, I think that language where it says arbitrarily and unreasonably catches that because it says, if what I'm applying for is not related to what I was doing, then it is arbitrary. Now, I agree, you need that there with the language for the "ban the box" revisions to define what arbitrary is, to define what unreasonable is, and to give that flexibility to, to, to thread that needle. But I bring that up because you know, Bruce, that the ads that run against us will be talking about NOPD and NOR. And it's important on the front end to talk about how these, this, this, both this amendment and the ordinance work together and spells out and corrects that language to show that we're not creating new problems and doing it. I think it's just, it's, it's so unfortunate to me. And your case affects me, Jared, but your case really makes me upset, Ms. Oliver, because we have people that always tout their achievements as being mayors of progressive cities, and they are savaging people like you in the public square at the same time. And I just, it hurts my heart because when you talk about people and vote knows the numbers, the people in the city who are underemployed or unemployed, the whole purpose of "ban the box," the way it was sold, was all the data you showed, which is that we should be the people employing people and giving them the basic building blocks to get the interlevel job, get more education, and move up the ladder in the process. That's what we should be doing as a city. And to hear your story, particularly how you did everything right, and the city not only didn't reward you, they literally punished you for it, it's just, it leaves me, I mean, I'm talking, but internally it leaves me speechless. I do not know what we need to do to solve that problem, but it will be solved. I'm so sorry you had to put up with this nonsense. I'm so sorry that I did not know your story before today. That's on me. And we're going to figure out a way to fix that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Oliver. Excuse me. Can I just say one point to Mr. Morel before you?
Yeah.
Uh, just wanted to give you one context for the background checks. People with convictions are the only group of people that are insured to the employer. There's a federal bonding program that allows the employer to mitigate the risk of hiring somebody with a conviction. It is mitigated by saying that if the person is, uh, is a risk or the person is discharged or fired for any reason, you will get, you can recoup up to $20,000 back for that loss. And you'll only find that in the body of someone with a conviction. The only bipartisan base underneath the previous Trump administration was the First Step Act. That First Step Act also gives federal provisions to the employer if they hire somebody with a conviction. So not just only with the background check is accessible, but you have an insurance with the state and the federal government saying if you hire this person and something does go wrong, you can recoup that loss.
I, I appreciate that very technical answer, but the reason why I said it the way I did to, because I know Bruce and, and Norris know what I'm talking about, that technical answer is not going to be on a flyer. What you need to be able to show is that we have a way to put this charter in place, that we have a definition of what arbitrary is. And this is why when the negative attack act comes out, you can say, no, 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 we're not saying somebody who's a, who's an officer who's been repeatedly charged with police brutality, but kept this post-certification. Because the state of Louisiana, for those who don't know, no one's post-serv, post, no one's post-service certification is ever revoked. So you have officers who are literally fired for departments for police brutality, who then go work for another department. The only way you catch them is because occasionally of a DA who files charges before they resign, and in that background check, you catch it. So I'm being very intentional in my language in that I think that the, 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 the real important issue is to pass the ordinance before this measure goes forward on the ballot. So you can show that the language in the ordinance captures the concerns that people will bring up about the amendment on the ballot. So there's a whole bunch of technical arguments we can make. That's not what you'll be making in front of the public. You'll be making like, no, it's not a problem. Here's how we solved it. So.
Got you. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
I think this is one instance where I'll say, I think that, um, our council president, JP Morel, touched on a lot of the things that I was going to say. That was a good, um, presentation that I see that he was prepared for. The thing that I'll say is that I appreciate the fact that everyone is here today, the number of people who are here today. Um, I think that in general, society recognizes that those who have paid their dues to society, if you will, or to the criminal justice system deserve the opportunities to be able to be a part of society. Whatever we can do as a city council, I mean, well, it depends on the, the vote. I mean, so it's subject to the vote. But I think that you'll find this city council has been very supportive of making opportunities available to those who have been denied opportunities in the past. The one thing that I'll say is an if, if this should go on the ballot, the council has to vote. And I never make a determination that that's going to happen. I just encourage everyone to reach out to the communities so that they understand. I mean, go to community meetings. I go to a lot of community meetings because there are like 25 community organizations in my district, uh, neighborhood associations, because they need to be advised and also be prepared for whatever the response is going to be of others. I see that many, I think that many times that doesn't happen, where there's not enough outreach into the community, where we go to the Desire Florida Community Center, we have a meeting, or we know that they're having a meeting of the Ninth Ward Neighborhood Association, and we tell them what's on the ballot. It's very important for our communities to know what maybe, you know, what's going to be on the ballot to be voted on. But in general, again, summarizing, um, I think one of the most important points is that as a society, we want to do everything that we can to integrate people who have, um, who want to participate in society to participate in it. And, um, I, I am encouraged by the number of folks that I see here today and the level of participation by some of the organizations that I have in support, that I've seen in supporting those who need a hand many times. So I just look forward to seeing what devoted the council is and then just recognize for everyone here, I, I can be redundant about one thing. It's very important to be redundant sometimes. What Councilmember Morel mentioned is very important, that the city charter governs the city, the city's operations. There'll still be a need to talk to the private sector should it pass. I encourage, just as I said about going to community organizations, that we go to the private sector and talk to them too, so that they understand what the benefits are, the same numbers you showed us, and the same social benefits everyone should be aware of. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll save my comments for, uh, closing. I want to thank everyone here, but, uh, once we get through the cards, then, uh, I'll close on what I think is a remarkable presentation, uh, very important research that was done that makes it easier for us to do what our humanity should have let us to do a long time ago. First speaker is Mr. Paul Mayo. Paul Mayo, everyone, uh, two minutes please.
Good morning.
Good, good morning, Mr. Mayo. Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Good morning. My name is Paul Mayo. In 1991, I was convicted by non-unanimous jury. I was sentenced to life in prison. In 2022, I was given a second chance at an opportunity to be in a free society. Since then, I, I obtained my CDL, which I was a CDL driver before I went to prison. And in prison, I was doing the same thing. And when I came out, I plan on doing the same thing. I had a job for 18 months. And two days before my birthday, on October, I mean, um, August 19th of last year, I was going to work and the manager called me and told me there's no more work. I had been laid off because they'd done a background check 18 months later. I was bringing home $1,800 a week after taxes. I had to accept a job that I'm bringing home $900 a week. To supplement my income, I applied to Uber, and they told me no because of my background check. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Earl Higgins.
Good morning, counsel. I'm Earl Higgins, reading for Gerald LeBeau. Um, my name is Gerald LeBeau. And my, and I'm, and I'm writing to share my story and ask for your help in fixing a problem that affects me and many others who've been through criminal justice system. I served 27 years, nine months in prison, and was released on July 19, 2019. Since then, I've worked hard to turn my life around, earning certificates and gaining skills that should help me support myself and my family. But despite my efforts, I've turned, I've been turned away from housing and jobs because of my felony convictions. While I was in prison, earned certificates in high-voltage electrical work, rewiring gas and oil refineries, cooking. I also earned a CDLA license, which includes endorsements from tankers, hazmat, and passengers. I also have a TWIC card and an OSHA card. These are important qualifications that should make me a strong candidate for many jobs. But I've been denied housing four times and turned, turned down for work more than 50 times. One experience I had working at a refinery, when I was responsible for building the first flame, which signals the public plant to work and running for full potential, I did my part. The plant was live, but shortly after I was laid off, even though I qualified and had rights, had the right skills. My criminal record kept me from staying employed. Attempts served that hired me promised guaranteed work with the company. But once they learned about my felony convictions, they let me go and offered me a low-paying job at the same place. This happened over and over again. It was discouraging. I'm going to speed it up. I'm, I'm going to go to the end because it's, I'm running out of time. Um, I'm asking for your support in making laws that protect people like me from being shut out, housing, jobs because of our past.
Thank you. Take, take him safe. Uh, Donald, uh, Arbright, Auburnut? I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, Mr. Donald.
Good morning, counsel. You did, but it's okay. I'm reading for Mr. Vital Mons. My name is Vital Mons, and I'm a formerly incarcerated individual who has dedicated the last eight years of my life to rebuilding, contributing, and becoming an active member of the New Orleans community. I am writing to share my story and ask for your support in addressing the critical issue of housing discrimination against formerly incarcerated individuals like myself. Since my release after 25 years and a half, I have faced a significant barrier in securing stable housing in the city of New Orleans. Over the past eight years, I have been denied rental housing at least five times, despite, despite being a skilled ASE certified mechanic. With great credit, I currently, currently work as a mechanic supervisor for a local sightseeing company, making a decent living and being fully capable of paying rent. My work ethic, commitment to my community, and financial stability should make me a strong candidate for housing, but the stigma of my past continues to hinder my pro, my progress. I am a father, grandfather, and soon-to-be husband, planning to marry next year. I would love to have a stable home for my family to thrive, yet this dream feel continually out of reach because of the discrimination I face due to my past criminal history. It is demoralizing to feel rejected time and again, especially when I know that I have changed my life for the better and am working hard to give back to my community. I understand that there are laws protecting individuals from certain types of discrimination, but it seems that like people like me who have paid our debt to society, trying to move forward are often left out these protections. I ask that your consideration and I ask that your consideration and do, in introducing or supporting a city.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. Uh, councilmember King before the next speaker.
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank the panel for, for speaking, uh, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Wall. Appreciate the testimony. I do have a, a previously scheduled, well, one, eleven-thirty meeting to attend, so I'm, I'm leaving, not out of respect, but I have another meeting to attend. I look forward to, to working with voting you all on this, on this legislation. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Willie Wood.
Fill out that code, but I'm here for the next meeting. I'll just wait for the next meeting. Thank you.
Oh, it's for city planning. Okay, all right. City planning. Zoe David Lane.
Hi, I'm, uh, here speaking for, uh, Dr. Nancy Lynn Rogers, who wasn't able to come because of scheduling. Uh, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Dr. Nancy Lynn Rogers and I'm a board certified neurological surgeon. I started my own practice in nineteen ninety-six and was blessed to help hundreds of vulnerable babies, children, and adults with the neurological skills I learned over my thirty-year career. That career came to a halt in twenty-twelve when I was wrongfully arrested, and I am not alone in this. Many individuals labeled by the criminal justice system are unjustly discarded and disqualified from full participation in society because of prior convictions. Our society's most precious, precious resource is not rare materials, it's people. The criminal justice system must not prevent individuals from being able to fully engage in their committee, um, communities and contribute to society. I was denied a trial for over six years. During these six years, I was denied my medical privileges even though I was not convicted of anything. My colleagues at the hospital desperately wanted, um, me back, uh, because I was one of the few neurosurgeons who would, uh, treat patients of all age and accepted Medicaid. The attorneys for the hospital told me that the accusations barred me from participating, uh, practicing neurosurgery. Several of my patient, patients died in transport to other hospitals while the other neurosurgeons in my community suffered from having to make, um, more emergency calls. Band-the-Box legislation has failed to protect people like me. I've waited for over thirteen years for my day in court. In that time, I've used my medical skills to help others impacted by injustice, many of whom suffer from mental health issues, um, as a direct result of being labeled and stigmatized by the justice system. These are good people and it is the system that is broken. This council has the power to address these issues by supporting laws that protect individuals with prior convictions. This will allow them to pursue meaningful work opportunities and in turn, um, to continue safety of their.
Thank you. Nadia Mohammed.
Good morning. My name is Nadia Mohammed and I'm reading on behalf of Troy West. My name is Troy West. I'm a man who served twenty-nine years and nine months in prison. I was released on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and have worked hard to rebuild my life ever since. When I was incarcerated, I focused on gaining the skills that would allow me to support my family and contribute to positively to my community once I was released. I earned several certifications in HVAC, hoping that my qualification will help me to secure a job, a better future for myself and my loved ones. During my time in prison, I completed rigorous certifications program through the National Center of Construction, Education, and Research, the NCCER. The program included HVACA, the Level One, HVACA Level Two, Advanced HVACA Courses, EPA and Universal Certificate, Certifications, and, um, HVACA Excellence in, in residential air conditioning, light commercial air conditioning, and light commercial, uh, refrigeration. Despite all my hard work and accomplishments, I have faced repeated rejections in my job search. After I completed my training and started looking for work, I was excited to have employees express interest in my qualifications. However, once they discovered my felony conviction, they ended the hiring process and told me I could not move forward with my application. It has been deeply disheartening to experience this level of discrimination, especially after everything I have done to prepare myself for reentry into society. I am talking to you today and asking for your support in making New Orleans a more inclusive and equitable city for people like me. I hope to, uh, you, I hope you will approve this policy and to, that protect formerly incarcerated indivi-
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Uh, Troy Hinkton.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Troy Hinkton. I'm the Family Unification Coordinator for Daughters Beyond Incarceration. Um, this policy is really important to me, um, not for me personally, because my education level helps me getting out of prison, uh, obtain the job that I have today. So, um, it's hard getting interviews, being a convicted felon. And then some convicted felon's education level also plays a major part. So dealing with what we, what we have to go through every day, um, like the brother spoke about, a lot of brothers are embarrassed. So they won't tell you what they faced with. They won't tell you that they don't have jobs. So it forces them back to the street because a lot of times you, I, I have six kids. So if I couldn't get a job, just imagine what else left to do? The streets is what most of us grew up around. We grew up seeing it. It led us to prison. So in prison, you change your life. You work. You get your GED if that's the case, or you get a trade. So you come home with expectations of changing. From everybody saying, change man. So give me an opportunity to know. So we come home after working in prison. I was in federal prison. I worked for sixty-four cent. I worked on a rec yard. I was a tutor, Oakdale, Louisiana, FCI. We was number four in the BOP when I was the head tutor. So to come home for me again with my education level, I went to LSU, I have a business degree, and with people that I know who really know Troy Hinkton a person and not Troy Hinkton that people try to make me out to be, I had an opportunity. But everybody don't get that same opportunity to coming home from prison. And, um, those opportu, it hurts. It hurts to put in the work in prison, to be a changed person, and to get out here and don't get the opportunities. I had a cousin just now went to McDonald's. Well, a friend of mine just went to McDonald's, just came home from the BOP, right? He was supposed to have the job. When they found out he was a convicted felon, they told him, I'm sorry, you can't do it.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you. Thank you. Charles Amos.
Good morning. I'm reading on behalf of Kiana Callaway. I am writing to humbly request your, your support for the Protective Class Network effort to restore the civil liberties of all individuals returning home from incarceration. As a concerned community member, for the criminologist major study at Loyola University, the president of the ISSC Impacted Solitary Survivor Council and a directly impacted individual, I have witnessed firsthand the severe collateral consequences that individuals face upon reintroduce to society. Unfortunately, I am also a testament of the flaws in our judicial, of our justice system, having been wrongly convicted of two second-degree, two first-degree murder, um, counts. After returning home from prison, I have experienced the harsh realities of reentry and the numerous barriers that individuals like me face. It has become so clear to me that people returning home from incarceration are one of the most vulnerable population in our society, and yet they are often subject to widespread stigma and hatred. As a city, we, we pride ourselves on our values of justice, equity, and compassion. However, the realities that individuals returning home from incarceration often deny their basic civil liberties, making it nearly impossible for them to rebuild their, their lives. This is why I am urging you to support the Protective Class Network effort to restore the rights and dignity of vulnerable population. By supporting this initiative, we will be helping to address the systemic barriers that prevent individuals from successfully reintegrate into society. This in turn will contribute to our overall safety and well-being of our community. I believe that every individual deserves a second chance and it is our collateral responsibility to restore that, that they, to, to ensure that they have the support and resources they need to thrive. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this matter further with you and explore ways to work together to create a more just and equitable society for all individuals returning home from society. And, and, councilperson, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alfred Marshall. Big Al. What's up, Al?
Uh, good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Counsel, uh, my name is Alfred Marshall. I'm organizer with, uh, with Vote. Uh, my experience is I came home in, uh, two thousand twelve and, um, the projects was being dismounted at the time and it had something in place where you couldn't go back and live in the project. You know, my children were living in the project, but the law said that. My girl was afraid that, you know, she could easily be put out because of what they were saying, right? So anyway, I, uh, was sneaking in and out of there. I landed a job at, at the high res. See, I was working over there. I was making like sixteen thousand dollars a year. That wasn't good enough. So what we did, I applied for another job, you know, to, uh, get on the boat, right? Uh, unfortunately, they had a lookback period of two years. If you had a conviction, I had just been home just about almost two years, but I was denied that job, you know, uh, the ride to vote, right? So I would say this, you know, uh, in regards to that, you know, being locked out like that, but thanks to God for Vote, you know, I was able to get a good-paying job at this point, right? But I know right now, you know, uh, all this work that's going on in the city, and we know it, you know, there shouldn't be no problem for people to find jobs when the city is self-contracting all the work out. And that's why we talk about the private sector. There are young men I know all the time, you know, trying to get into the workforce that can't get it because unfortunately, you know, if the roads belongs to the city, there's a lot of work in the city need to be done with the roads. And it's said that, you know, we got young men standing on the corner because the city is sub all the work out to subcontractors who are not hiring our people. So that's a big issue that we have right now, I, I would say. You know, let's get some of the work back, you know, so we can hire our people that's in the city. You know, there's no problem. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ju, a lot of people that need jobs and they're here. And look, you say, you know, as a civil service people, you know, you're not hiring them as far as, uh, as far as they got a conviction. A lot of them have a conviction. If y'all will get some of the contracts and give it out to some of the citizens in the city, we'll be all right. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alfred. Uh, we've just been, uh, uh, reminded that, uh, the council rules don't allow for someone to speak on someone's behalf. So if you're gonna speak, just say it on your own behalf. All right? Uh, Mr. Louis, uh, Ambo, Embo? Mr. Lewis? And Junior, I'm sorry, I left that out.
Louis Ambo Junior, twenty-nine, twenty-seven Powell Hotten Street. I'm a native son of New Orleans. I'm a former Marine. I'm a former incarcerated individual, currently unemployed and out of prison since two thousand ten. I said something. I came to speak just to say, I'm a Strive NOLA graduate. I've done all kind of jobs. As a military person, the most important thing that you can know, if you want someone to succeed, you have to support them correctly.
Thank you. All right. Sierra Green.
Hello, my name is Sierra Green. I'm a local business owner here in New Orleans who is concerned about the discrimination happening in our community. It's a true privilege to be standing in front of you today, a privilege because I can. You see, I'm not here for myself, but for the invisible people who aren't in this room, the people who can't afford to stand here, but I can, the people who can't take off work, but I can, the people who are too embarrassed to tell their stories, but I'm not, the people whose convictions have branded them, whose dignity has been stripped from them even after they've served their time. My brother has been wrongfully incarcerated in Georgia for over ten years. Because of him, a lot of the work I've done to support the wrongfully incarcerated and the formerly incarcerated has been centered in Georgia, but I live here in New Orleans. I work here, I pay my taxes here, and this is my city. So I've carried that work home with me because the problem exists here too. And that's how I know these protections work. I've seen it with my own eyes in Atlanta after they passed this exact ordinance we're speaking about today. I've studied the impact. I've seen the people whose lives were transformed because people in power said enough is enough. Councilman Thomas, if I may, you've lived through a time where you weren't protected under the law for the color of your skin. Now you are. But today, as a black man who was once incarcerated, you are still not protected from discrimination in housing or in unemployment. But you, as this council, you and this council can change that here, right now. And let's be honest, there was a time every person sitting on this committee might not have been protected by race, by gender, by religion. You are only sitting in power today because someone before you expanded the circle of protection. Now it's your turn. This amendment is just not about fairness. It's about giving our people, our neighbors, a real second chance. It's about ending the sentence at the prison gate, not extending it to every job interview, every housing application, and every no that gets thrown at someone who's already paid the price. Because justice doesn't end when time is cert-
Very well said. Thank you. And Zeki Wilt.
Greetings, counsel. Today I stay in here because I am one of the co-founders of a group called Rise Collective. And that collective group is here to actually support, support those in the community. Way too often when I'm doing the reentry process, that process is not done successfully, because discrimination does not allow me to do so. Um, there's folks that have already applied for the TWIC and they've been denied because of their background. Um, I have my son that was working at the airport. He does have a marijuana felony and he was also fired because of that charge. Um, I don't understand how those jobs have a nerve to deny anyone to do jobs that nobody else actually wants, that cause physical, um, damage to the body often. People serve long terms of incarceration and cannot find stable housing. There aren't enough reentry programs or landlords that is, that will accept the background. And so so many people are moving around, which makes them unstable and more likely to commit petty crimes. How can we expect people to come home and thrive and be productive when there are no protections to allow them to reinvent themselves? In summary, reentry is necessary, discrimination is not, because it will provide, it will provide, it will not provide the essential support and resources that individual needs. We just asking for the council to support us so my job could be a little easier and our people will be successful as possible. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Charles Carter. Mr. Carter isn't here. Eugene Dean. Jean. Where's Jean at?
Good morning, counsel. Uh, my name is Eugene Dean. I'm formerly incarcerated. Um, I've been freed for twenty-six years going on. Um, when I first got out, I was discriminated against. I applied for a managerial job, went through the training for two days. The third day, the person who was over the training came out and said, if you've been convicted, you can leave now. So that was two days. That was my first encounter. Second time I applied for housing, couldn't get no, no, no housing. Um, I had to get my aunt to co-sign for me to get housing. Thirdly, I worked for a, a program called Circle of Courage Mentoring that Mr. Thomas introduced me to. And, um, I was working in the school system through that program. I had been working like three years. Then they decided to hire me directly for the school. I went to the school. I worked for two days, came back. The principal told me, because of your conviction, we got to let you go. So this thing is really needed. You know, all of us affected about this criminal justice system, especially about impacted people who trying to move on with their lives. So I really encourage you guys to really take this serious and, you know, dig deep and work with us in whatever language that we might need to change to make this happen. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. Mr. Norris Henderson. Mr. Norris Henderson.
Good evening. I've been working on this issue for like 22 years, from trying to change Tower 35 on the state level to being one of the guys who helped lead this national campaign, the Ban the Box, that took us all the way to the White House to meet with Valerie Jarrett and Roy Austin. And when I looked at this panel, I reflected on what was unique about that conversation with them as opposed to this conversation today. Five out of the six people here work for organizations that are run by formerly incarcerated people. That's the difference. This ain't about just discrimination. This is about, are we a part or do we belong? That's what it boils down to. Are we a part of this community or do we belong in this community? Because just like Mr. Hankton said, the street don't require a resume. The street don't require a resume and people got cred, they got street cred, but they choose to want to do something else. And that something else is just gainful employment, affordable housing, the things that people need to be successful. You know, I don't have the same, 50 years ago, I went to prison. I've been home 22 years. I didn't have the same challenge. I had a job waiting on me for 10 years, waiting on me to get out in a law firm. And I went straight to that job. I didn't have a problem with housing. I had a house. But I met a friend of mine one day who was homeless and I didn't know what that looked like. And that's been the few that's driving me for the last 22 years, we have to change this system. And it starts here today and now. They in the box, we thought would solve the problem, but it didn't solve it nor resolve it. And I agree with JP, Councilman Morell, that the language has to be meticulous. I agree with Councilman Green. Yeah, we're gonna have to go tell our story to our neighbors, but surprisingly enough, I would say 75%.
Absolutely. And the last, we just got, we just got this card from Adam Sebey, Sebba. And you can correct me on the last name if you'd like, Mr. Adam.
Good morning, Counsel. It's Adam Septi.
Septi.
I just wanted to stand and add my voice to this course and supported this. I am an attorney in town. I do some criminal work, but mostly do civil litigation. I'm a graduate of Tulane Law School. Been here for 15 years. This is my adopted home. I just want to say it seems to me supremely unfair to allow discrimination against people that have paid their debt to society and they should have the same access to jobs and housing as anyone else. And so I'm here in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any online comments?
Yes, we have two online comments. First one is from Alona Prieto. She says, please put the protected class issue on the ballot for voters this October. I'm a family member of a formerly incarcerated person. When my son's father came home from incarceration, he had friends and family who could not give him a place to live and was hired immediately. Although he's a lawyer, he has been a construction project manager for the past 11 years. Not everyone has this kind of support of the kinds of resources we had to wrap around him. He feels an incredible amount of shame and I often wonder what would have happened to him if he had had to endure the constant rejection that would have followed him at each turn. Even though he has a job and a place to live, he still feel, still experiences the shame and judgment from others that comes with the conviction. I hope this committee can truly understand the needs for which to, for there to be protections created for those in our community who have a conviction history. Based on the numbers, a lot of our neighbors and loved ones across New Orleans are affected. I also have a son with special needs who is protected under the law because he is disabled. He would not be where he is if he was not part of a protected class. He still has to compete in the workforce with people who are fully abled, so the protection is no handout. We know how important these protections are for him and it should be the same for people with convictions. The only way we can begin to beat back the narrative that people with convictions are dangerous and not worth safe, affordable housing, jobs that allow them to prosper and just survive, and educational opportunities is by creating pathways for success. It's this council's job to protect the citizens of New Orleans and so I respectfully ask that you spend this, send this to the full council and then to the voters. And the other comment is from Nancy Lynn Rogers, M.D. There's great harm being done with pervasive discrimination against talented individuals who have a lot to contribute merely because of a criminal history. I was denied hospital privileges merely because of a criminal charge. Individuals need to feel that they are part of their community. There are serious mental health consequences when individuals are perpetually ostracized. That's it for your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell and Councilmember Green for closing comments. And then I'll close and I'll let the last word be from the heroes at the table. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, come on, Mr. Cook.
Just gotta throw our card, Mr. Cook.
Yeah, yeah, just fill out, fill out a card after you talk. Everybody, Mr. Cook.
Good morning.
Yeah, I called Mr. Carter's name. He wasn't here. No, Mr. Carter, you can, yeah. Soon as Mr. Cook speaks, then you can come. I have your card already. But when you finish, just put your, your name on the card, Mr. Cook.
Okay. I'll try my best not to go over three minutes.
It's two minutes.
First of all, good morning. How you doing? This is a conversation that I, I'm kind of shameful that we're having it in this Christian nation. Where is the forgiveness? A person does wrong, if a child does wrong, does his mother and father prosecute him over and over and punish him for that same crime forever? I mean, where is the forgiveness? All of these men that came up, I know most of these men, and I saw a change in these men take place when they came into prison, a change that had to take place because a change didn't take place from birth until five years old or six years old when nobody was raising them. Okay, there has got to be forgiveness and this is the process we go about it. Give them people jobs. How can a person, how can you have rehabilitation when, when someone gets out, they can't find a job? Where's rehabilitation then? What was that fault? Am I right or wrong? Are we wasting money in rehabilitation? When a person does all that time, it gives them, it takes them out of the cycle of being out here. If they weren't raised right, it gives them another opportunity to examine their mind and if there's rehabilitation going on, there's people there to help them out. And when that person gets out, that's a better person that could probably collapse into a worse person if he's rejected all the time for jobs that he really need. And I just want, I don't want to go too long. I'll just end it with this. Where's the forgiveness?
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter, the Councilor Carter, before you go.
Mr. Member Morell.
I need to leave really quickly, so I'll make two quick points before you go. Just real quick, I know that there was a mention of non-unanimous juries back there. I want to remind people that even though we repealed non-unanimous juries, there were a multitude of people who were convicted before that repeal. And for many of them, they had to plea out to get out of jail. So you had people that were convicted under unconstitutional, non-unanimous jury, who under any other state in the United States would never have been convicted, but were forced with the reality that unless they pled out for the DAs that would let them plea out, they could not leave. And that, that story from that CDL drive I see back there still, sir, is really poignant because even when the state does wrong and admits it, you still get punished. The other thing I want to mention, because a mutual friend, Meg Garvey, brought to my attention, there is a Senate Bill 227 by Heather Cloud, which literally is seeking to revoke unemployment from people purely based on the fact they were formerly incarcerated and that they are under, under probation. So it is very important for cities like New Orleans to step up and provide employment opportunities because even when you're gainfully employed, you have people at the state level that are trying to find new ways to punish you. So I just want to make those two quick points. I apologize, leave early, Mr. Carter, but I got a meeting I can't get out of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, and then the last call we have, at some point we have to get out of here for the city planning hearing. After Mr. Carter, Ms. Amelia, Terrence or Harris? Ms. Amelia, you're right after Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter.
Good morning. In 1979, I was imprisoned for four years. During the time I was in prison, I did everything that I could to prepare myself for society without even knowing if I was gonna get out. I completed several life-changing skills programs. Carpentry was one of them, small injury repair, AC and OR. I came home and, and 2022, I was released after doing 43 years. And 2023, I applied for housing. I was unemployed and I'm a person that suffered with glaucoma. And my condition is so bad now that my sight does not raise to the level that allows me to be employed. So my income comes from a federal government check, disability. That's what I received. All the places in which I have applied for housing have denied me based on me being a formerly incarcerated person. What makes it even worse is because I can't work to make enough money for housing for people that won't discriminate against me. The check that I receive every month does not cover but a certain amount. You don't go so far. So when, you know, when you take that and you share that, what you have to do with other people, and then you try to pay rent off of that, there's nothing left for that. So I can't be employed.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Amelia.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to talk this morning. I just want to come before you and say this simple thing. When I think about protected class, I think about me being a nurse and having been arrested after a mental health situation. That was nine years ago. I still suffer from the consequences of that and I did not even receive a conviction. See, it's like a stigma. It's like a scarlet letter that you wear with you and it never goes away. We have suffered harms, biases, discrimination, and what protected class is doing is just asking you to make it a level playing field because we constantly have to deal with collateral consequences of our one mistake of incarceration. So please, today, I'm urging you, please, pass this protected class because it's much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amelia. Councilmember Green.
Mr. Councilman, just because we have a number of people here and you can help get the word out, and I know that there's discrimination out there, but I do want to encourage anyone to recognize that the city also has an agency called Job One. And I've helped a couple of people who are formerly incarcerated, one person who was incarcerated for over 35 years and he's gotten employed. I just, and if you have some issue and you contact Job One and can't get the support that you need if you feel you're being discriminated against, I know that this doesn't solve all problems, but please feel free to call my office. That's all I'm saying. I know that there could be problems even there, but I just want to let you know for a fact that I have helped people who are formerly incarcerated to get jobs. The counselors at Job One, and you can walk in there, it's on Aretha Castle-Haley, are very, very open to talking to you. That's all. But also, I just want to, again, thank everyone for coming out today. Thank our presenters today and, you know, recognize that if there's anything that I can do to, you know, support the efforts to make it more possible for those who have, you know, paid their dues to society to become incorporated into society, let me know. I'll also tell you that there are programs, for example, at SUNO, the Small Business Development and Management Institute, that work with those who are entrepreneurs. I have a property management firm and I employ, even though it's their companies, I contract with persons who own companies who are formerly incarcerated. So if there's anything that I can do to help, just let me know.
The first thing I want to do is thank all of the participants, my colleagues, and I want to thank the heroes sitting at the table. So much as I, I'll try to be concise with my comments and to not belabor them. But when you talk about reform, if you remember the history of it, I think it was David Ruiz in Texas and Brother Mohammed in Leavenworth in the 70s who fought for reform. George Jackson and his brother in California in Black August who fought for reform. So when I look at the men and women at the table, and reform always comes from the people who didn't get an opportunity for reform or opportunity to service them. And so, Mr. Marshall, for you, Mr. Oliver, Jared, Patrick, and Bruce, this is kind of the way the world has always worked. You blaze a trail for salvation, not because it benefited you, but because it benefited others. Democracy, justice, and humanity shouldn't be the exception. It should be the rule. When you say that people have paid their debt to society, what folk don't understand, if you haven't grown up like some of us or lived in a house or been through the system, you don't understand how, even with all these reforms, how the system has worked against you. Norris, we know what happened with per se motions in the Fourth Circuit, where even when folk worked on the inside to gather evidence that could exonerate them or free them, that the injustice there, where they wouldn't hear those motions. And the gentleman, actually in his note where he committed suicide, that burden of not granting those motions weighed on him in his life because it affected freedom, people's freedom, and he worked within the system. When you talk about ban the box, yeah, you banned the box, but you left the shackles. When you talk about there are many formerly incarcerated people who build the ramp, but you can't use the ramp. And then you're really trying to, Bruce, kind of help save us against ourselves, right? At some point, when you're talking about mandatory minimums in this system, one in three African-American men, one in seven black women now, and many poor whites or whites who aren't affluent, who didn't have the system of the justice, that the number was growing into the millions, where people were being pushed outside of their citizenship. And we were approaching Norris, a system where at some point it was so many people that you were risking taxation without representation, a 17th century France, where the people who were pushed outside of the opportunity tore down the walls and demanded that if you're gonna take my taxes, right? If you're gonna tax my crops, if you're gonna weigh on my humanity, then I'm gonna fight to get that back. So in many ways, this opportunity is protecting us because the system is pushing so many people out. But then it makes economic sense. In one study, two, we're costing ourselves 240, this nation, 240 billion dollars just with misdemeanors. 77 billion dollars just with formerly incarcerated people. And another 55 billion just in other categories. So why would we cost ourselves all those billions of dollars and not protect a class of people who could help this economy? I don't understand why this hasn't been done and I don't understand why people don't get it. And the people at the table and the folk who are formerly incarcerated, y'all not just trying to save yourselves, you're trying to save this democracy. You're trying to save our society. So I am so proud of the folk who are here today. And when I talk about the exception, you know, it's like people saying, oh, you speak well. Oh, I know a lot of people. Man, for, you know, for this kind of person, wow, you're really smart. Oh, you grew up in the lower ninth, what? Oh, wow. See, you see, you made it. But there's a whole lot of other people who didn't. So if we're gonna use the exception or the exceptional people here as the rule, democracy by subtraction will not stand. This country won't survive itself unless we start to give opportunity to people who've paid their debt to society, they've served their time, and they contribute, but they can contribute in a much bigger way if we, if we protect them like we protected my like we protected my handicapped sister, like we protected other classes of people because of their affliction or their disability. But let me say this. There's no disability to being formerly incarcerated. There's only ability. The ability to survive in spite of. The ability to thrive in spite of. And for folk who may not know, some of the most successful businesses that operate in this city and in this region are people that I know who are formerly incarcerated people. They operate million-dollar businesses. Not because they wanted to. In many cases, they were forced to. But they should not be the exception. And I won't say his name, but one of the richest people in this state is an ex-offender. He was protected because of his skin color and because of his class. So why shouldn't we protect everybody else? This is a human right. This is a human right. And if you don't want to do this, if you're one of those people who don't understand the level of humanity, you may not want to, but we need to. Because in many cases, God gives us the only people who can protect us from ourselves. And many of them spoke today. Closing comments, Mr. Marshall.
Oh, man. I appreciate you all, Councilman Oliver Thomas. Mr. Eugene Green, I really appreciate your comments. To Councilman Morell, Mr. King, I really appreciate you all. I walked up in this room today not knowing what the mood was gonna be. I told my colleague, "I'm gonna go early so I can feel the spirit of the chambers." Today, I feel like the invisible people have been heard. I'm thinking about Ralph Ellison, Invisible Man. The invisible people in our society, they were heard today. Councilman Green, your comments confirm